Thank you very much. This is the flag of the United States of America. Energy, liberty, and justice for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In compliance with the open public meeting act, chapter 231 laws of 1975, state of New Jersey, adequate notice to this meeting in the South River Board of Education was provided in the following manner. On April 4th, 2019, and the 24th, 2019, a notice was faxed, mailed to the following newspapers, the home news tribune was sent. On April 4th, 2019, a notice was delivered to the office of the South River Borough Clerk and posted at the Board of Education Administration Building. On April 4th, 2019, a notice was posted at the South River Borough Clerk.
Roll call.
Mr. Andre.
Mr. Andre, excuse.
Mr. Bezzac.
Here.
Mrs. Beck.
Here.
Mrs. Bush.
Here.
Mrs. Cruz.
Here.
Mr. Nielsen.
Here.
Mr. Rosado.
Here.
Mr. Vannick.
Here.
Mr. Ralutin.
Here.
Mrs. Cassiano.
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time and place that has been designated for the review of the 1920-1920 budget, for the hearing and the adoption of the budget. We will open the meeting to the public, or is there any comments or questions before we start the meeting? One other thing is that after the hearing and the adoption of the school budget, we will take a short adjournment for about five minutes and then go right into our regular monthly meeting. Saying that, may I went from the audience. Saying none, we'll pause the forward portion of the meeting. I'll turn the meeting over to the finance committee and to the superintendent.
Thank you. I will go ahead and be presenting our budget from the podium. Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Education and community members. Thank you for being with us tonight to discuss a very important item, which is our budget for the upcoming school year, school year 1920. And I'd like to begin with just a general overview of how this budget was developed and what the processes that we go through in order to come up with a comprehensive budget that will meet our students' needs. So basically, we begin by looking at our district goals and our district objectives. And these are based on our student data. What are our students showing that they need and how are we going to provide for those needs through our budget and our resources? We also have to adhere to the Elementary and Secondary Education Act and all of its mandates, as well as the mandates that are outlined in ESSA, and of course, our student learning standards. So how do we get here? Well, we hold meetings and we hold conversations. So it begins at the school level with our school-level administration, who does a lot of this work through committees, through our teacher leaders, who talk about just really the conditions and the resources and what's necessary for our students. And it begins with conversation at that level. Then we have a conversation as district administration. We also meet with our board finance committee on a regular basis to discuss our needs as the year progresses, and then also with the full board. So each department and each school drafts its own budget and outlines what their needs are per department and per school. And then each of our departments and school administrators meet with our business administrator, myself, and they really give us a rationale for the items that they have. Where's Brian?
Sure. I keep telling you, this happens all around.
I know. Oh, my goodness.
I gotta learn to control.
You're supposed to stop. We're even now.
Thank you very much. I only have 54 slides to go. All right. Where were we?
Budget approval.
Budget approval, yes. So each of our departments and our schools provides us with a rationale for why it is that they are including the items that they are including in their budget. And again, that rationale goes back to identifying our student needs and our school and department needs. The board finance committee reviews all of this information with advisement from our business administrator, from advisement from myself as the superintendent. They review the budget in detail for effectiveness and efficiency. And then it goes through a budget approval process at the board of education level, at the Middlesex County level, and then back for our hearing here tonight. So we have different ways that we remain fiscally responsible. We have outlined them here. This presentation, by the way, will be posted on our district website, in case you want to look at it in further detail. But here are some of the different ways that we are fiscally responsible, how we maintain our facilities, how we meet all of those state and federal mandates which come to us quite often and that we have to keep up with. One example that I can think of off the top of my head is the newest mandate to ensure that we provide financial literacy instruction at the middle school level. This one just came out, has to be implemented by September. So those are the things that come our way that we have to deal with on a regular basis and that we have to think about when we create and develop this budget. It's just one example. Here we outline some money-saving efforts. We work with the Middlesex Co-op. We explore revenue sources. I'll get into that a little bit more in this presentation. We're looking at special education costs and for two reasons. This is twofold. Number one, we want to meet the needs of our students here in district. That is optimal, that is always the best. We want to do everything we can to keep our students here in district. And that's not just about a cost savings, but it's for the best interest of our kids and making sure that we have the services and resources that we need to provide for our special education students. We also work with the Ed Services Commission in regards to planning for transportation, energy cost savings, and then we also have a shared service agreement with our borough. So what we're looking to maintain for the 1920 school year, what we're going to remain fully staffed with qualified personnel, and this is really important to us, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in this presentation as well. Instructional staff, we want to maintain appropriate class sizes, and we want to do our best in that regard. We want to make sure that our instructional resources are updated and are aligned with standards. We've been doing a lot of that work in 1819, and we're looking to maintain that and improve that even more in 1920. So what we're looking at for 1920, to be able to provide, we have just this spring been able to provide a salary increase for our paraprofessionals. We're looking to maintain that for the 1920 school year. Salary increases for our lunch and recess aides, that is a hard job, and we want qualified people that are compensated properly and who are there for our kids at one of their most vulnerable times of the day. And we also want to maintain the salary increase for our daily substitutes that we put in place in school year 1718, looking to maintain that. Again, we look for qualified people that can provide the services we need for kids. All right. What we're also going to continue to provide is PSAT testing for all of our high school students. We're going to continue our implementation of iReady. We've actually been able to do this through grant funding, through Title I funding. We're going to maintain that. The continuation and expansion of our foundations program, this is our phonics-based program. We've implemented this in K and 1, and now we're looking to expand that to grade 2 for the upcoming school year. So able to maintain that very, very fundamental and important instruction for our youngest students. We're looking to add mental health services. We know that children are vulnerable, children need support, and so we're looking to increase what we do in the realm of mental health services for our students. We're looking at an initiative for a one-to-one student device for our high school. And what we're doing for our middle school is we'll be transitioning a lot of our high school devices to our middle school and hoping that we get as close to one-to-one at the middle school level as possible as well. So we're very excited about this initiative for our high school students. Textbooks. We are introducing several new courses to our high school students, and we're in a position to be able to get the resources and materials, the textbooks that we need for those new courses, as well as updating some of the textbooks that we've had in existing courses which really needed a true update. So we're able to do that in the 1920 budget. Additional teaching staff. So we're looking at the high school to add an English teacher, a math teacher, half a social studies teacher. We're looking to reduce our class size a bit at the high school. We have some classes that are up to almost 30 students, and we want to really address that. We're hiring a special education teacher for the district, a behaviorist, a SAC counselor, and we're looking for a special education supervisor, as we're looking to bring a lot of those programs back into district, and we'll need that support. We are again allocating $80,000 to our security personnel. Those are our Class III officers that are in each of our buildings. We are sharing this with the borough. That shared service agreement is on our board agenda tonight, and we are thankful to the borough to be able to, again, partner with them in this regard. So we're very pleased to be able to keep our security personnel. I know they have been a welcome addition to our schools. We're doing a high school vestibule project this summer. You're going to see a new vestibule being built right in this building. We're looking for an upgrade to our phone system. Our phone system, that's on board agenda tonight. Our phone system is approximately 20 years old. We could definitely use a little bit of an upgrade. But more importantly, we're looking to upgrade it in a way that makes us, again, adhere to more secure measures, and we'll be talking more about that in the next coming months. We're looking to upgrade our security camera software. We want to make sure that we have the best possible working camera system, so we're looking at that. And then we're also looking at the internal door lock systems in all four buildings. So this is a list, not about 1920, but about 1819. And we want to present this just to give the community an idea that when it comes to financing our programs, that we don't only look at state aid and we don't only look at our tax levy, that we look at different sources to bring different revenues and different sources of income to the district. This year, our biggest one was that preschool expansion grant. We received notice that we could apply for that in August. That application was due about two weeks later. It was an extensive and difficult application, but we did it. We were approved, and we are just thrilled that just this year we were able to already provide free preschool to the majority of four-year-olds in our township. So very proud to have gotten that grant for our town. Our ESSA grant, our Title, money comes in, supports programs in ESL, supports programs in professional development, supports programs in all four of our buildings that receive school-wide funding in that regard. Title I reallocation funds. We had the opportunity to apply for Title I reallocation funds. We had to put a proposal together. We had to outline exactly how we would spend those funds and have a budget plan in place. We made sure that we had that, that it was submitted appropriately, on time, and so on, so that that could be approved, and we were approved there. We did an E-rate in order to facilitate some of the infrastructure upgrades that we needed, helping us fund this project. We have a grant opportunity with our school insurance company. We always go for that. Perkins. Perkins changed significantly, and we had to do a lot of work in terms of reworking our courses in order to be able to qualify for that Perkins funding. Originally, we did not. We revamped a lot of our courses in order to be able to qualify for that Perkins grant, and we did. We've been working with Middlesex County College. They're providing us professional development, so we are able to reap the benefits of that professional development for our teachers. The CAT program and a Poetry Out Loud grant. So that just gives you an idea of the kinds of things that we go out for and that we try to supplement what we already bring into the district. For 1920, this is what we've already applied for. Some of it we have notification on, some of it we don't, but I included it just so that you can see that even in school year 1819, we're already thinking about how to bring revenue in through other sources for the school year 1920. We went for that preschool expansion grant again. We received notice of that. You can see that number increased significantly because we are also increasing the number of students that we will serve. So as of next year, we will be serving 10 preschool classes of three and four-year-olds. And again, full free preschool for our South River residents. Perkins again. We were able to go for that grant one more time with our new course work in place. We actually received a bit of an increase in our Perkins for next year. We already received that notification. We just recently applied for a federal-level grant called Community Schools. We will not know if we're awarded this grant until July, but it's a significant grant. As you can see, it spans across four years, and if we receive this grant, we are able to allocate almost $500,000 towards community services for our families and our students. So this is a big one. Everybody fingers crossed we want to get this one in July. So we are, we're hoping for this one. We also applied through Schneider Electrics for different initiatives and ideas. We submit ideas, and if they find them to be innovative, they can award us these funds in order to put those in place. And so we submitted, I think we're up to five ideas for their consideration, and we will receive notification of that also in July. So those are just some of the ones we've already applied for. We don't know the status of the majority of them, but just so that you know, we're already working on bringing in revenues for 1920. This year, we brought in right at school. Previously, we had an after-school provider. We had no facilities usage agreement with that provider. We do with our new one. That brings the revenue into the district. We also took a look at our teacher leader positions. Our teacher leader positions, we actually moved from our local funding into our Title II. Title II funding is for professional development, coaching, and leadership, and so this was a great fit. Also, our robotics. Our robotics advisors can be funded through Title IV, which is meant to support STEM programs and STEM education. So we were able to really get creative and move those items out of the local budget and into Title-Based funding, which is a savings to the district. And then also, we really looked at, we've had attendance policies for staff in place for many years. Those did not change. What we did do was enforce them, and that has caused a significant reduction in terms of substitute pay and so on, also a great savings to the district. Again, this was nothing new. It was just something that we began to enforce and look at a little bit more closely. And so I included some student data, just because it's important, I think. We hadn't had student data included in the budget presentation before, but I think it's really important for us to look at how we spend our funding and what impact that actually has on how our students achieve. So this is our iReady data. This is reading, and you can see it's actually kind of backwards. If you see winter and if you see the fall, the goal, just very simply put, is to reduce that red and increase that green, and you can see that we were able to do that between fall and winter. And this is reading, students K-8. And here's now. Same thing. The goal is to increase that green, decrease that red, and you can see that we were able to do that to a significant effect. And again, we're proud to see that the things that we put in place through our budget are actually having the impact they're supposed to on student achievement. Here's our high school. This is a comparison of what we in South River look like versus the state. Also really important, so we're looking at South River averages versus state averages. So you can see the orange is the state average, the blue is the South River average. You can see that we are either at that state average, inching extremely close to it, or surpassing it. So that's really good news in terms of our ACTs, SATs, and so on. And so just in closing, we're looking to use this coming budget for 1920 to continue to really make this continuous growth. We're seeing a fantastic growth trend. We have more kids taking AP exams this year than we ever had before. We saw our scores in AP exams increase last year from the previous year. We're looking to do that again. And so we're really focused on a budget that gives kids exactly what they need in order to be able to make this type of growth. At this time, what I'm going to do is turn it over to our business administrator, Mr. Casca, who's going to tell you a little bit more about the different figures and funding sources that have made this budget. What is this?
Thank you, Ms. Zercher. Of course, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out. It's nice to see a full crowd here today. Whoever's working the...
I'll do it.
Oh, I thought Brian was doing it. My apologies. I only have two sheets, I think.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, first and foremost, this is just a synopsis, a summary. Tomorrow morning, assuming that the board's going to approve this budget presentation, it'll be on the district's website. It's a user-friendly budget. Gives you more detailed information. It's a state productive budget. It's not from my office, it's from the state. So again, you can go on the district website, just make sure you click on there right here because 1819 will still be there. Should be off, but it may still be there. But 2019, 2020 should appear tomorrow, so then in the event that you want to get a little more finer tune as far as what is being discussed today. As far as, I just want to go over just the highlights. This is the revenue portion of the budget. I'll go through the local tax levy. We're entitled, we're ability based on the provision with the state to increase the tax levy up to at least 2%, and that's what this represents, up to the 2%, which then it doesn't require taxpayer approval. The Medicaid, excuse me, the state aid, slightly misleading, so we just want to make sure everybody's aware. In state aid, even though this is a general fund, as we call it, because the state has provided, as Ms. Zercher has indicated a few times, the district did receive pre-school education aid. As far as the state is concerned, it's state aid. Unfortunately, the aid that was given to the district for the preschool program is what we call restricted, which means that that money can only be used for the preschool program. So we have a shortfall in the general fund. We can't take the money that we may not spend in the preschool and then take it over to the general fund. So in that 1.7 million, there's approximately, there's around $600,000, $700,000 increase as a result of the preschool aid. So it looks like we've got a boatload of money, how we did to some degree, but keeping in mind that a good chunk of that change is for the preschool program. And if we don't use it all, then the district has the ability to carry over into the following year. But I'm sure Ms. Zercher will have no problem trying to spend, just as long as we have the kids. So as long as we have the kids in the program, Ms. Zercher will definitely have no problem spending the preschool aid. Medicaid reimbursement, it's a slight increase. What this represents is the federal government pays for some of the expenses that are related to special ed cost, or only special ed cost. It's not restricted, however, the funds are used to balance the particular budget. Misses ladies, income. Tuition, you see a decrease of $52,800. For those who are familiar, in the past, we did have the integrated pre-K program or whatever. It has sometimes changed its name, but it's the three and the four-year-old program that we had to recharge tuition. Since we received the preschool aid, we're no longer required, no longer allowed to charge for tuition for any student. So therefore, the tuition that we had budgeted in the past, we will not receive going down the road. As long as we receive the preschool aid money, we're not allowed to charge for tuition. That's the only kind of tuition we usually get, you know, get it from any other district that thinks that nature. The capital reserve, there were two projects that Ms. Zercher referred to, the high school vestibule. Just not going into too much detail for those in the high school, what it's basically going to allow us to do is going to have another entry into the building. So right now, as you know, as we go into the building here, you open up the door and you're in the building. What this high school vestibule project will do, will have another, so to speak, another wall, so to speak. So you go in, and then you're in between two doors, and then you'll be greeted and determined whether you can come into the building. So it's, obviously, it's a safety feature that the high school doesn't currently have. As you know, for those who are in the elementary school, there are two doors that you have to go through. So the high school is now going to be on par with the other schools in the district. And the other project Ms. Zercher referred to is, there are some security items, again, without going into too much detail, that will be used for security upgrading and enhancing the district's security issues, particularly in the schools. This is capital reserve. Again, the money cannot be used for anything else for capital reserve, so if the cost comes in less than what we have budgeted, the money cannot be then transferred into the general fund to offset anything that we may have to use, unexpected expenses. The money just stays in the capital reserve. And again, just like the preschool money, it cannot be used for anything else other than projects that we, that are outlined in the resolution that Mrs. Cruz will read later on. Okay, now that we have the money, we have the expenses. Again, I'm not going to, everybody can, you know, we have the sheet, you can go on again on the website. Just a couple of highlights there. For those in the audience, as you can see, we, the salaries increase up to almost 3/4 of a million dollars. Our out-of-district placements, as Ms. Zercher related to, that is their plan to bring back some students. So therefore, these are for special ed students that are currently out of district that are going to be brought back to the district, and as a result, the tuition that the district has to pay in the previous years is not going to be reduced by, as you can see, the $80,000. The transportation is all special ed-related. As you know, we don't have busing for anything else other than for special ed. So that's pretty much it. Charter schools, we still, as you can see, Mr. Rosado's favorite. Favorite pet peeve, so to speak. We have, this is, I think, since the charter schools have come into existence, I'll forget the first year, I think this is the smallest increase that we have, so hopefully it's leveled out to some degree. I know that the biggest charter school that we have that is at KEEFA over in East Brunswick, they are now up to eighth grade. Over the years, they started at K through 5, then K through 6, now it's through K through 8. So we think the floodgates have stopped, and our charter school obligation will hopefully remain at least that. I know Mr. Rosado would like to see it lower. I'm sorry to pick on you.
Significantly.
I know.
Don't make no bones about it.
I'll give your school a little segue.
Thank you.
Because I know you like talking about it.
I love it.
Our special ed costs, these are the costs related to special ed. This also includes the salaries for staff and everything else. That's just not, just for programs or anything else. That again, that also includes the staff. As Ms. Zercher indicated, there are some new staff being included, so that's a part of the increase. The maintenance, that isn't, the reason that it's up that high is the capital, not the capital project, the maintenance projects that we refer to, the security projects. So as a result of that, the number has shown a slight increase. And I'll go down to the last one, the grant. This is what I was referring to. We received an additional $625,000 from the grant from this 1819 school year to the 2019 20 school year. Again, although the first, all the lines up to, down to the grant are considered general fund because, again, it's state aid, and just, we're throwing it in there as far as the budget presentation to show the amount of expenses that we're going to have associated with the grant. The next slide is primarily just for people who live in South River, or anybody who doesn't live in South River, these next two pages are going to, really don't mean anything to you. What it's basically saying is that this is what it's going to cost you for that 2% increase. Unfortunately, the ratables drive the bus as far as the increase or decrease as it relates to the taxpayers, and unfortunately, the town did experience another significant decrease in ratables from the previous year, which then places a more burden onto the taxpayers because of the ratables continue to go down. So as a result, the, again, someone living in South River, the average household in South River is around $82,000, you'll see a $65 per year increase and overall an 8 cent increase from the previous year. Now, I'm sure there's some people who live here whose homes assessed higher than $82,000, and of course, those, some assessed lower than $80,000. So again, it's going to begin depending on, you know, obviously, the assessed value for home. I'm not sure exactly where the reevaluation process is. I know it started, so I'll be interested to see what happens when we're here next year.
Yeah, it's not complete yet.
Okay. So the ratables, you know, again, we'll probably be discussing the same thing next year. And again, then the 16 million that we referred to, you can see that, again, the And again, then the 16 million that we referred to, you can see that, again, for those who get tax bills, you can go look at it, you'll see that the tax rate for the school, just for schools, just for schools, will be the $4.33 as opposed to the $4.25. And again, just showing you what your monthly increase would be and your yearly increase. I believe that's it. So at this point, I'll turn it back over to the superintendent. Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
Must have done a good job.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
This time, we welcome the meeting to the public. Any comments or questions? Commissar questions are basically, in the midst of 10 minutes. If you feel comfortable, please give us your name, address. Anyone from the audience? Last call? Last call? There's a question under me. We have a primary meeting. I got you over the bridge.
Tom, do you just want me to read? I'll have that part right here. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We already adopted this, though, at our last meeting, didn't we? Or do you want to redo it again?
That was the tentative one. Now this is the...
All right.
Since there's no changes, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
You want to read the whole? I'll read the whole. One, approve 2019, 2020 school budget. Be resolved that the Finance Committee, upon recommendation, the superintendent recommends that 2019, 2020 budget be approved. One, approve the base budget. General fund budget, $33,248,054. Local taxes, $16,325,440. Special revenue fund, $2,611,860. Debt service fund budget, $1,439,930. Local taxes, $1,439,930. Totals, $37,299,844. Local taxes, $17,765,370. Whereas the supporting documentation of this budget also contains an itemization of certain expenditures required under administrative regulations. Whereas capital projects will be funded via withdrawal from the capital reserve account in the amount of $129,609 for the following project. A high school vestibule total project cost $129,690. Whereas maintenance projects will be funded via withdrawal from the maintenance reserve account in the amount of $44,000 for the following project. A replace and install locked tumbler and keys cost $44,000. Whereas the South River School District Policy Number 9250 and NJAC 6A:23B-1.2B provides that the Board of Education shall establish in the annual school budget a maximum expenditure amount that may be allocated for such travel and expense reimbursement for the 2019, 2020 school year. Whereas the South River Board of Education hereby establishes the school district travel maximum of rate 2019, 2020 school year at the sum of $34,946, and the 2018, 2019 maximum amount is $46,248, and $34,715 has been spent this year thus far. Whereas the South River Board of Education established an annual maximum school district travel expense for the 2019, 2020 school year funded by federal funds at the sum of $25,100, and the 2018, 2019 maximum amount is $18,968, and $11,889 has been this year thus far. Now, therefore, be resolved that the school business administrator shall track and record these costs to ensure the maximum amount is not exceeded, and I so...
Mr. Minister, first?
Second.
Mr. Nielsen? Any thoughts or questions? Do the board have this? Not?
Broke. Mr. Bazak?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mrs. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Nielsen?
Yes.
Mr. Rosado?
Yes.
I also vote yes.
Urbanic, you're right.
My, my apologies. It says Mrs. Urbanic right here. All right, time for the glasses.
At this time, we welcome, during the meeting for approximately five minutes, this has yet to be established, and we'll be starting then, however, the right of the public must believe.[1798.37]